Hi guys, this is Praos and yeah. Again online with another session review. Yeah, got a lot of hands I marked today and yeah, I want to go through all of them. And see what I should do. So, 3, 4, 5. This is good. So this is small blind. Button vs big blind, okay. We don't have the small blind, so let's take this one. We are 100 BB deep. It's a free bet pot. And what is unpaired? What is this? A straight. 5, okay, almost. Almost what we got? Uh, we got ace, ace, 3, something, 10, check. You should, okay. Okay. Button, small blind vs button is what we really want to do. Guess now we got to put it in again. So what is our hand supposed to do? Check, almost always. And oh, I guess that's the difference to PLO Trainer, right? We want to bet 33% and let's see what PokerTrainer suggests. Yeah, so that's already difference. So PLO Vision wants us to bet 33% if we bet and PLO Trainer says that the correct bet size is half pot. I personally prefer the half pot, but yeah. So let's see what if also the results differ. Yeah, at least that's about the same, so we should check most of the time. And when should we bet? Seems like a bet is preferred when we got a flush draw too. So once we check. So the pre-flop aggressor should bet 33% and the non-aggressor is supposed to bet 50%. What is it here? Here it's half pot for both players, so what if we face a bet when we should just call majority of the time? Reraising some. Okay, let's, okay, now we are in this spot, um, we had in our hand, so a 3 roll off. This means, uh, no better flush draw. So let's put a 3 in there. And yeah, our hand checks. That's not surprising. And what is he supposed to do with this range? Checking. Can I reset the hand filter somehow? Click back. Yeah, okay, I guess we reset them now, so we check and it's 50/50, we should bet or not. And if we bet, we should only use 50% sizing. What is ace, ace for Jack now doing? Still a mixed strategy between calls and reraces. Hmm, especially especially when we got back up in form of a flush draw we just want to call. Okay, let's go back, 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 back. Let's now say that, back again. We made the bet, got called, it's again a 3 and yeah. So if we are the aggressor, we prefer to bet again. How do I get this hand filter out? Not at all, as it seems, it's annoying stuff. Yeah, but I guess this is a general tendency. Um, yeah, I did the same in the hand and I bet the flop too, although GTO suggests not to bet and I think um, it's a better strategy to check the flop because you almost always miss as a pre-flop aggressor and if you got strong hands, um, when you have to play your range and check a lot on board, where you are, you have supposed to missed. Okay. That wasn't too complicated. Moving on to the next one. Okay, the flop already is interesting. King, 10, deuce. Hmm, it's again the same thing, yeah, um. Hmm. 100 BB, single raise pots. Unpaired. King, 10, deuce is not available, so we take king, 10, 3. It's a flush draw, base 1. Oh man, I hate it. This is like so annoying. I don't know why this happens, but it feels like I always set the positions right in the first place and then for some reason it jumps back to something else, so it's, it feels like this is not user-friendly at all. Okay, uh, this also sucks, but it's I mean button vs big blind and small blind vs button is a completely different situation. It's a small blind range is completely different. I mean, the free bet range is about the same, but you defend completely different. So that's rubbish. So let's use PLO Trainer instead, um. Call fold. Board is king, 10, something, king. 10, deuce, I think, king, 10. Okay, that's not good at all. King, 10, 6 is a lot. And there was a lot more draws, but seems like that's the only thing we can choose from, um, that is coming the closest to our hand, although yeah. Okay, let's take this one. It's checked. Uh, what was our hand again? 10, 7, check 8. Um, in general, we check a lot. 10. Check 7, 8, is this correct? Uh, I think that's also annoying because uh, check 7, 8, 10, check 7, 8, 10, check 7, 8, 10, yeah. The problem now is although it's a problem, 7, 8. There's not really a problem. So yeah, we, our hand has got a bit better because we now got a gut shot too. Don't want a gut shot. Right? Don't want a gut shot. Hmm. So how do we solve this? Can make a 7, a 5. Yeah, let's do this. Hmm, okay. Um. Okay, our hand is only been bad when we got a flush draw, at least block a diamond. In our case, diamond is a spade. So we should yeah, I mean, not all these combos bet, so yeah. We can do both checking and betting. Let's, unfortunately, we cannot continue to the turn. As we got no turns for this, so but yeah, check is definitely in line. Um, we can consider betting when we got flush blockers or if we hold the flush draws out. Next one. Okay, uh. Let's check out, we also got pre-flop now, I think. At least I thought I saw something like that yesterday. Uh, yeah, pre-flop, 100 BB, raise first and cut off, uh. I'm not sure if it's, or what is this, uh. I think this is, this is some sort of bullshit, right? Never worked with this one, so sorry for that, um. Facing raise, okay, now we have to go to big blind versus cut off facing raise. Correct? Do I have to click apply? What happens then? Nothing. What happens if I click generate? Nothing seems to happen. Toggle doesn't do anything. Oh, something happened, um. Hmm. Seems like I got no hand filters here. So this is also something, what? Uh, seems like this is once toggle, okay, toggle is just choosing everything or nothing, um. Yeah, looks like this is rubbish, so back to good old PLO Trainer. And let's undo this. This is a raise for fold and it's on us. Um, what was our hand again? Ace, king, queen, 7. Yeah, I expect this to be a defend. Ace, king, queen, 7. Ace, king, queen, 7. Hmm. The rainbow version is folded. Yeah, but the rest is being defended, so this wasn't even that hard, so yeah. Let's move on, um. So this can be done using vision. And so 5, 6, check. What is this? Let's go here, um. Single raise pot, button vs big blind. It's mono. What was it? Jack, 5, 6. We don't have this one. So what do we choose instead? Check 5, 3, okay. Fuck. Uh. Check 5, 3. No, the stack size is correct too, um. We should check a lot. Uh, let's also again compare the bet sizings. I think it's half pot in PLO Trainer, right? If you bet here, uh, jack. Okay, wait, I think we probably copied, copied most boards. Yeah, it's half pot here. So yeah. Okay, close. Let's see if the frequen-, oh. Uh-huh, the frequency is developed um, between the two programs, but that's probably because JNN is defined, our bet size is half pot and yeah, if we bet bigger, we have to tighten up. Yeah, but in general, not many bets. What can we, what is, click? Analyze. Hand classes. All. Loading categories. Let's see if this is helpful. This is taking long, but it's already annoying. Hmm, what was our hand again? Check, 8, 6, queen. So we have top 2. So we can that cannot check call. I used to bluff even without a flush draw. And not a flush draw, flush blocker. And no pair, open ender is used, bet. Um. Flush. Did click, right? But it's not opening up. Is this a computer issue? Is my computer too bad for this or what is going on here? Lot more, oh. This is painful if you want to open these categories. No pair, not flush blocker, open ender bets. Uh, visa also way too many categories to get a general idea, it feels like. Yeah, so a lot of bullshit would likes to see more cards, but it's so weak to check call. Dons, uh, some good made hands, dong. Some good blocker, dong. And where is our hand? Top 2 pair. Top 2 gut shot, now we don't have a gut shot. Flush blocker, I think we also have no flush blocker. What do top 2 with nothing? Nothing else do. Top 2 open ender, top 2. Okay, we check majority of the time, most likely we can just ah, okay, okay. Hmm. We bet if our hand plays very badly on later streets. I mean these hands blocks the straight draws and also yeah, have basically no playability later. So seems like these are the ones to bet and yeah, hands bet also, um. Have the third blowout board pair bet sometimes. Yeah, okay. Um, so I guess our hand is a check, uh. Let's again look into my hand I had, um. It's a bit annoying having to switch between these stuff. Uh, I think I put it if I put it here, you cannot see it anymore, but that's not that bad. I will bring it on screen. Um, when you need to see the situation. Uh, so it's jack, 8, queen, 6, but we had to choose a different board, so we have to change with one a bit, so it's like check 5, 6, 8. Check 5, 6, queen. Yeah, let's take check, 5, 6, queen. Apply filters, while checks. Uh, yeah, I mean, this is probably just bullshit, so we want to check. Okay, what is the answer from this thing? Uh, hand filter, check, queen, 5, 6. Yeah, checks most of the time. Uh. Okay, here, um, it's 33% instead of half pot for JNN does. Uh, don't know, I need to figure this out, um. Seems like some different bet sizes are chosen by the people who made the simulations and in addition to that, um, vision is not really working, um, for pre-flop. Or at least it's not as good as PLO Trainer for pre-flop, but Vision has a lot more sims for post-flops, so, um, I would say that in the status, these are in the development stages, I mean, they are getting added features over time, um. I would say that PLO Trainer is best for pre-flop at the moment and Vision is best for post-flop as Vision has a lot more sims and PLO Trainer unfortunately only has, um, sims for the flop or almost only for the flop. And yeah, you also have no forward plots in PLO Trainer and yeah, you got all these pre, uh, post-flop stuff for Vision. Very annoying stuff is that none of these have, um, sims for the river, so you would have to do them for yourself. Yeah, Vision, um, PLO Trainer almost has no, um, almost, has almost no turn. Uh, no turn spots. And you only have turn spots if it's going check, check and only on some boards. Um, yeah, and, and in PLO in Vision, you have, um, spots for flop and turn on many boards and also for 50 and 100 BB and for single raise pots, three bet pots and forward pots. So yeah. Vision is better post-flop and PLO Trainer is for pre-flop mainly. I also look into the differences a bit, um, yeah, to see what these guys are doing, yeah. So let's move on. So imposition checks not as much as the imposition player. Um. I think we want to see some hand classes to get a idea. Um, what sort of hands will be bad? Yeah, PLO Trainer will add post-flop sims over time. Actually, I think they added some, um, lately. And yeah, I think Janus said that they have like three or four computers running. 24/7, uh, yeah, and once they. Have finished the sims, we will add them and I think we have to add many sims very soon because they. Increased the price a lot, um. Before that, uh, PLO trainer was just built in into the PLO mastermind and now it should be 150 bucks a month, I mean, that's. Ridiculous, I think vision also increased the price, I remember, but I um. Paid for one month, um. And it cost 100 bucks or something and now it's 120 and heads up sims are not included, you would have to pay extra, so yeah. Both these products are relatively expensive. So yeah, what are we betting? Um, no pair, gut shot. So looks bottom two open ender. So top and bottom. So this looks a bit. Like it's polarized, though we also betting very bad hands a lot. Set wants to bet. Bottom pair bets most of the time, no pair, flush blocker bets a lot. Yeah, flushes bet a lot. Let's open this one. Hope my computer will not crush because of me clicking on flush. Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, a bit, ah, fuck. Uh, should we wait? Let's, okay. It's just taking very long. Uh, yeah, we betting many, okay, visa checked, uh, we are betting weak flashes a lot. Although many of these are ace or king high. This is just 10 high, but we block. Continuing range of opponent. Yeah, but. Betting, what is it? 62% of our flashes, uh. Sick, ah, also, that's interesting one, very interesting one, um, so what is the range here? Um, we are betting a bit more than 50% and Janus who has a. Bigger bet size, let's see how much we will bet there in position. Yeah, you are right, very expensive to make too. Uh, look at this. So we bet only like one third of the hands if our bet size is 50% and. Yeah, if it's only 43%, then we bet a lot more. Board overview, what, I think we can also do a better visual. Um. Description of the sport here somehow, but. Not sure how to do it. I just clicked equity bucket, bucket charts, yeah, I think that probably. Is this bucket matrix? What the fuck do I have to click? Uh, can someone from chat help with this one? Yeah, I think, um, I need to get a better understanding of. In this tool of screen, this also will take like forever. Uh, yeah, that's annoying, but let's see if we face a bet. What is going on? What we should do with top two? Uh, my estimate is we should call. Yep. What should we do with top two? It's getting checked through, um, what was the turn card? Hmm. Okay, we don't have a turn card. Let's pick something that is not changing too much. Like the eight diamonds. Um, our range still wants to check a lot and our hand is checking almost always, what is, is, what happens if we face another bet? This is lagging so badly. I'm not sure if it even took my click, I think not. Yeah, we still want to continue and re-race. If we got the six flush blocker sometimes. Quite ambitious. Quite ambitious. Uh. Oh. What is this? Uh, it's not the one I was looking for. Uh, button bet 50%, what is this even? Uh, button checks. Uh, range comparison, board overview, um. Is it bucket charts what we need? Uh, but checks, button bets, no. Uh, bucket matrix, what is this? Hmm, this bridge, oh wait, 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 yeah, I think you can. Define buckets like. Top two bottom and top two bottom and top pair, flush, straight and stuff and. This will. Have some great graphics for you. What's that? This looks sort of interesting, flush falls. Okay. Okay, here are some flush, some things too, true. Description, can I click in here? Two pair, top two, no draw, back draw, draw, back draw, draw. Okay, this is just. An information overload for me and I'm not sure if this is helpful in any shape or form, uh. Okay. Let's just move to the next spot. Um, we learned that the PLO experts that make the sims are not sure if we should bet. 53% on these lockdown boards or 50% and if we choose a bigger bet size, we should bet a lot less. And in general, this lockdown boards are played relatively passive and you can do a lot more betting than in position. So yeah, bets, uh, take away I got from this. Hmm, okay, we got this in vision. Hmm, so 100 BB. Three red pot. Button, uh, but where is it? BB, no, 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 uh. We don't have, what we need here? More blind versus button. Okay, that's basically the same as, um. It's big blind versus button because the three red ranges don't differ that much. Okay, uh, it's. So we will build this situation now, just to let you know, um. So we need a deuce, a 10 and a 3 on the board, it's unpaired, 10. Uh. We don't have it, but. We got this one instead and this should. Do well too, um. I think this, um, are the same sizing Mr. Janus uses, so. At least on this board type way. Have the same opinion about the bet size we should use. Um, yeah, so. There's a lot of betting going on. Think that's generally the case with one big card and two small cards, um, when you are the pre-flop aggressor. Um, let's load this. No pair open ender, mid pair low, flush draw. Top pair, flush blocker, gut shot. Bottom pair high flush draw, gut shot, no pair, nut flush blocker. Wow. No pair, nut flush blocker bets 100%. No pair, nut flush blocker, interesting, um. Hmm, so, oops, this, this race. Call. Want to compare this to. The solution of poker trainer, I'm also not sure if you hear that background noise. Um, yeah, it's annoying for me too. But nothing I can do about this at the moment, so. Um. Yeah, let's find out if the nut flush blocker will be bad pot here too, um, so we exclude. Too hard, but have the ace and hearts. Um, apply filters. Nut flush blocker is betting pot a lot. Seems like it has. Another pair. Often. Not always, but often. Okay, let's see if. No pair, how do we ensure that we have no pair? So we have no 10. No five, no deuce, no pocket pair. Okay. If we got the nut flush blocker, wet pot, and yeah, that's. Definitely a pure bluff and yeah, we will. Fool to race. So. Didn't knew that, it's also a bit surprising to me because, yeah. Just the nut flush blocker with nothing else seemed a bit weak, but. Yeah, the solver builds good strategies normally, so. Yeah. Mid pair nut flush blocker, so nut flush blocker is getting used a lot. Overpair nut flush draw, okay, that makes sense to bet. No pair, nut flush draw, it's a mix between. Overpair. Flush blocker. My straight draw. Okay. Hmm, let's compare, um. Frequencies. So, yeah, 20% matches this one, 44% matches, not really, and pot also. So we got a few differences, um. I wonder which sim is better? Um. In my. I possibly, um, I mean, we cannot. We don't know, but it seems like a lot of sims from Janus were not long, were not run long enough, so I. Suspect that the ones from vision might be better, but. Yeah, we don't know, we have no, um, way to. Look into that, I just know that for Janus. Um, often there are hands where the solver is still unsure and this is, um, if you. Stop the sim too soon and yeah, not sure if raise it, run it once, had more patience and ran their solutions longer, so. No way to tell about this, uh, but the frequencies are a bit different. But yeah, the general idea is, um. Not much checking and yeah, a lot of 50% betting, a bit less. Potting. So. Let's now. Go to our hand. Um, we have to change it a bit, I mean. The, although we have, no, we don't have to change anything, uh, we had another, a different board. But yeah, this doesn't matter, our hand is still doing as well on this as on the other board. So. Let's fill in the four, three, five, ace. And yeah. Mid pair flush blocker, open end straight draw. This is better than open end straight draw. This is a rap. Uh, but seems that. Uh, mid pair open end straight draw. Mid pair low. mid pair low flush draw, open straight draw. So with the flush draw too, the call is a preferred line. And with no flush blocker, we also prefer to just call, right? So we pot, then we got the backdoor flush draw and we although not always. So now, what is our take with this? No flush blocker and the backdoor flush draw. We can get it in, but with no backdoor flush draw, we should prefer calling. If we block a flush, when the the flush draw, when the preferred line is to get it in and hero in this hand blocks the flush and he was shoving in. So tiny changes to your hand can change your strategy a lot. Let's go back and let's also figure out what we are supposed to do if we face a full pot size bet. Interesting, we don't call as much as before. We are now getting it in way more, so all the flush draw versions of the hand and the flush draw and the flush blocker version wants to be all in and the backdoor flush draws mainly get it in, especially if, although cannot tell for sure, so the backdoor flush draws also get it in most of the time, just if we have no interaction with all the other draws, we still prefer to call. Okay. Hmm. Okay. What else do we need to look into? Ähm... We want to know, let's figure out, once we just call what ah, what is the card? Let's do this one. So, and what is the betting? He is betting fifty, his preferred sizing is fifty percent, so let's go fifty percent, so he's betting fifty percent. And what are we supposed to do? We want to get it in. Is he supposed to fold an ace if we shut? Okay, let's figure this out. So if we shut, is he not folding aces? Hello? No. Aces should not fold. Aces will call, so bad calls in the line from the solver here. They don't see a point then to shut. Ähm, what happens if ähm, so we call we call and the flush gets where, the flush and a straight gets where. The guess is preferred sizing will be smaller again. He will check often and his preferred sizing is again fifty percent. And we don't have aces, we still have ace, three, four, five. We want to call. Unfortunately, we cannot see what we are supposed to do on the river, but yeah, our hand should call. Let's also see what we should do if the river is a blank, what is the most blankish card we can add in here? Queen or something? Fifty percent. Call. Call and yeah, let's put in a queen. We face another bet and our hand is calling. It feels strange, I mean, the deuce for me felt like a worse card than the queen. But on the deuce, we were shoving and now we're just calling. Okay. Next spot. That's just pre-flop one. What do you think Twitch chat? Is it, is it defender or not? Ähm... So, this is a raise fold. Call. So that's queen jack nine four, queen jack nine four. Queen jack nine four, I guess. Queen jack nine four. Queen jack nine four. I still think, you say that it's expensive to make these sims, but I still think that they make tons of money with it. It's not that expensive when they sell it for. By far not that expensive. Queen jack nine four, okay, double suited. What? Yeah, so that's what I mean. The Jane and the Sims are not run long enough, so we have like often stuff like this, you should do one action only and yeah, you often don't do that, so that's why I said, Jane and this, or the guy responsible for, their sims is not paced enough, or they just want to put out a lot of sims, but the sims are not that reliable if you run into spots like this or that often, so yeah. Next one. Hmm. That's, oh, yoyoyoy, that's interesting. Eight, nine deuce. Okay. See if we have this eight, nine deuce, three bet pot. UTG. Nope, UTG versus SB, okay. That's the closest we can get, it's rainbow. Äh, nine, eight deuce, perfect. Okay, it's like fifty fifty, what he's doing. Ähm, let's load some end classes. Though this will put my computer to the test again and we will have to wait a few seconds. Yep, let's remove this. Hmm, I think it didn't work. And now he's... Now we are talking. Okay, okay, okay. Ähm, no pair, no pair backdoor flush draw, no pair backdoor nut flush draw, so oh, that's check. Who's the time? No pair to backdoor flush draw, that's bottom to, to backdoor flush draws. Overpair, backdoor flush draw. So which are the most things he wants to bet the most? Mid pairs bet a lot. Top pair. Overpair. But the over with some additional equity. So looks like the good things want to bet a lot. Excluding the sets, we are slow playing. Yeah, it makes sense, I mean, sets are a lot more robust and can continue on a lot of turns and yeah, if your opponent checks back, even if a straight comes in, you can still call and with top two, the board can change a lot and you don't want this to happen, at least not for free. Hmm, not really, not using Discord at all, I would say. I mean, I used it a bit for crypto stuff, but yeah, I have an account, but I think I didn't log in for like a year or something. Hmm. Interesting, so, yeah. Let's see what Ace Ace wants to do. Ace Ace, if Ace Ace wants to bet, it wants to bet big. Okay. Ähm, let's now see what the imposition player is should do if it's checked to him, he should, yeah. It's like fifty fifty what he should do, bet size is fifty percent only. Ähm, what, nein, I do this. Äh, did, 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 did raise. Re-raise call. Nein. A deuce. Okay, he has two sizes. Okay, that's also a major difference between Jane and this sims and the sims from Run It Once, Run It Once just has one size. Fifty percent and Jane and this has two sizes. But it looks like not that much, not that many of their hands want to bet for pot, so fifty percent is mainly used size. Yeah, I don't know how long I will have it. You get three months for free. I was in the mastermind, so yeah, that's good, but yeah, the three months will be over soon and then I will probably not have it anymore. Not sure if I want to pay the hundred fifty bucks a month. I mean, at the moment it's not worth it because yeah, we are not enough sims, but once we are more sims in might be worth. So yeah. Fifty percent is mainly used size, so what should we do with our hand? Ace, we don't, we have king, king, ten queen. And we check one hundred percent. What if, what is general kings gonna do? Hmm. Not much betting. And can I? So, classic. What? Äh... Wasn't there a different overview somehow? Hmm, really, you see, I'm not hundred percent familiar with both of the softwares. Yep, so let's check. I also checked, so good to see that I do some things, right? Yeah, okay, that's interesting. I checked and he now wants to bet half pot. So, Pilo Trainer is out now because he cannot deal with situations like this, but Pilo Vision has turned sims luckily, so ähm, eight and diamonds, this is not good here. We have to put in the eight of clubs, for example, so with flush draws now became possible. Hmm, okay, the imposition player wants to bet a lot and most of it fifty percent. And this is not the imposition, the imposition player, the pre-flop aggressor and what is he doing with Ace Ace? I guess it will get, we've thrown a bet a lot, yeah, that's the case. What about King King? King King already checks a bit more, what's about Queens? The same as Kings checks. So the overpairs all want to bet, what is about an eight? Eight is betting for sure too, but about a nine? So, everything's betting, so I guess once I face this bet, King, King, Queen, ten is an easy call. Not really. Why should I fold? Twenty four percent fold. So call with the backdoor flush draw, which I had. And what is, what is, what are the folds? Ähm, this looks very interesting. In my mind, I would basically never fold if I have King, King, Queen, ten. Because my feeling was that once in eight rolls off, we yeah, our hand, I mean, nothing changed and our opponent is enticed to bet a lot. Because yeah, he's, he's mainly been put on aces and aces yeah, aces are very enticed to bet, but if he has no aces, he will also bet like always, so and we also get a good price, we have gut shot, we can hit a king, so very surprising that we are supposing some, we are supposed to fold some of our kings. The ones that block the King eye flush draw. And the ten eye flush draw. And the ten eye flush draw. Yeah, anyone has, uh, any plan or idea, um, how to figure out which combos to call and which to fold? I always have a very hard time to finding a pattern, yeah. But yeah, um, seems like a majority of our hands want to call, but some still fold. Uh, I thought this was a call hundred percent of the time, but yeah, we fold some. This is also a bit interesting, I'd say, not too interesting. I mean, you cannot, uh, do, make that many mistakes. If you have a pair, the nut straight and the flush redraw. And the redraw is even to an open and a straight flush draw, so. Hmm, let's, now we have fifty, maybe only it's a singles unit board. This is small blind versus button. The board is a straight board. Six, five, four. And, yeah, let's see. He. So, I guess this is again different from Jane and this, but let's figure this out, um, raise. We have to, I think we have some fifty, um, Sims in there, that's over, this is working, this is working, so. Can compare some things, uh, where is it? Six. Five, three. No, six, five, four. So. Got to take a board that's a little bit different. Okay, okay. It's the same, uh, what if he checks? Okay, okay. So. I guess this is, um, cost, there is less money left and that's why we got this smaller bet size here. Okay, um. They click back, yep, uh. This looks quite different. Look at this. Okay, the board isn't, this is, okay, do we have, uh, yes, a board two, okay, let's take this one instead and compare. This, this is a huge difference. Look at this. I mean, we have the same bet sizes, we got the same board. And PLO Vision wants to check twenty eight percent, but the PLO trainer wants to check forty one percent. And the small bet size is used about the same. And the pot size bet is used way more often from Vision. This is, oh, again, 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 this is again a mistake by me, sorry, 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 sorry. Um, that's the board, right, so. Now, let's now compare, um. Yeah, but still, um, this is now six, four, three, this is six, four, three. And yeah, this is very different. Uh, let's remove this. And make another screenshot. There's a huge difference. Man, what happened? My computer. Should buy a new one, maybe. The numbers differ a lot. Fourteen. So, the bad part about the same, but the small bet size is used a lot more often in Vision. I'm pretty annoyed that these differences are so big. But whatever, uh. Let's continue with the real board we had. And yeah, let's take thirty three percent because we don't have a pot size bet, uh, I mean, a half pot size bet. And we got seven, eight, five, what was it? Okay, we even had the higher straight draw too. So yeah, this end, the solver, um, prefers to just call. Yeah, this was what I was wondering about, I raised, because I got greedy. For so much money, I can win here, um. Actually, against the fishy opponent that is not folding all his flush draws and might stack off with some ridiculous stuff, um. It's best to, uh, put it in on the flop and not wait for more cards, so. Uh, yeah, I still like it, but against the regular calling probably is best when you have everything, everything and crush the board so hard. Okay, that's another pre-flop decision, um, I think that has to be called. Um, nothing else makes sense. So raise, re-raise, fold, 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 download. Anyone in chat, uh, different opinion, I think, yeah, it has to be called. Ace, eight, nine. Um, yeah. Rainbow version and the version with weak flush draws get folded and everything else wants to call. That's what I did, uh, oh, that's interesting. Let's look into Vision, oops. So same hand again. And now we move on to the flop, um, we got one, it's a three report, it's button with a cutoff. The board is singles suited, it's ace high. It's ace seven four, we don't have ace seven four, we only have ace seven three or ace seven five. Ace seven three is the one I will choose. Hmm. We should check one hundred percent, makes sense, he is, uh, great advantage in having top set, I mean, in reality, he has, can has have top set, we can't, so. Checking makes a lot of sense and now he should bet fifty percent almost always. What the hell is he supposed to check? Computer engine clipboard is not helping that much, uh. I don't care what he is checking, to be honest, let's just see how we should react to a small bet. Um, folding lots. I mean, that's definitely not, um, in line with minimum defense frequency, if you fold against half pot, uh, sixty seven percent of the time, but I think this makes sense in this board, because we are just crushed way too often and let's now figure out what our hand is supposed to do, I folded and he also wants to fold. Unless he has the ace high flush draw or flush draw. Yeah, I have none of that, and that's why I'm fooled, was correct. Uh, that's interesting, let's look into it, um, I had eight, eight to do from middle position with forty BB, but the closest is fifty, although fifty and forty are basically same, but yeah, we want to find out if eight, eight, do, do, singles, you, it's a raise. I say no, but I still couldn't resist in game. Eight, eight, do, 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 do. Yeah, only double suited, it should be raised, um, what about one hundred, I guess with one hundred, it might be fine, but not sure if you can raise a singles with ones. It is two, you can raise the singles with ones, but what is this? Okay, that's again the issue I was talking about, Sims not having converged yet and yeah, so. No clue, so choose for yourself what you want to do, seems like the solver doesn't now, so there's no way we can now, uh, just do whatever you want and how you feel in the moment, eight, eight, use, use, is on the edge. Uh, moving on to the next hand. What happened here? Free the port, I check back flop, I guess. Yeah. So let's get, handle, be free report, blind, first blind. Singles with board. Five, three, deuce. Five. Three deuce. And, yeah. So. Let's remove this hand. The small land is supposed to check to us the majority of the time. Um. Let's see what type of hands he's dunking with. Although, um, to be honest, I like the overview of the dogs way more in PLO trainer, so that's done a lot better in here. Five, three deuce, here it is, and let's see. Oh, oh, we again got a huge difference between the two, so what the fuck? Look at this. Ten percent difference. I mean, in my eyes, there shouldn't be such a huge discrepancy. So. In PLO trainer, we don't want to dunk at all. And yeah. In Vision, we want to dunk quite a lot, I mean, at least three times that often. So, yep, okay. So what sort of fans are we dunking? The nuts. What else? So this is all the nuts. And yeah, what sets and stuff? Are we also dunking some weekends? Um, five, seven, seven, yeah, well, it's weird, I guess. Six, seven, eight, gut shot. Two, ten, ten, this is like nothing at all. Just a backdoor flush draw, overpair of tens. Or these percentages also like, Wayne, what's this, uh? Four, four, makes sense. Blocker, backdoor flush draw. Just bottom pair should get dunked a bit louder, uh, calling the wrong one, yeah. Uh, let's see. What we can find here? Top two, nut flush blocker. Is checked always. Okay, okay, we want to see the main beds, bottom two. No flush draw, bottom two high flush draw. No pair, nut flush blocker, gut shot. Makes sense, uh, set. Open and a straight draw, bottom two, flush draw blocker, gut shot. All these dogs make sense, um. Middle pair, flush draw blocker, top two, high flush draw, open and straight draw, you're wet, you send up, or you're not, uh, bottom pair, flush, blocker. Set and gut shot, but the checks most of the time. Top pair, flush blocker, gut shot. Nut flush draw, overpair. But not betting much. I, I think the range construction probably is, it's hard to say which one is right. Okay. Yeah, I, I will look into, um, your blog. Um. Yeah. So. What we really want to know, what? Okay, we we bet a surprisingly big amount, I mean, the pre-flop aggressor is not supposed to hit that often. Uh, let's compare again. Yeah, this I can close to each other. What the one before was completely off? Okay, uh, what we want to know is what is our hand doing? This is not our hand, uh, our hand was like nuts. The redraw. Okay. Let's just in general find out what Ace Ace is doing. Hmm. About fifty, fifty. What is Ace Ace doing? Poker trainer. Nothing, because it crushed, did crush, no. Ace Ace. Ace Ace, what is going on here? Ace Ace. Oh, man. Download. Ace Ace, okay, it's working again. Hmm. It's close to each. It's close to each, we are close to each other. Let's go to see. What about ace, ace for six? Okay, betting almost always. Yeah. So maybe. Looking at the same thing on poker trainer. Yeah, seems like solver doesn't want to slow play. And I did slow play it. Okay, we cannot look into the thing, the solver thinks about it because he's not slow playing basically. I think, I think I misplayed it. I checked back, he bet turn big, I think, and I raised and I folded. Probably I should have just called turn and called any river. Or raise river or bet myself, depending on his action, and bet size. And obviously the card too. Here was trying to figure out if I should call a re-raise. I mean, I cannot call a four bet, but. Probably should call a re-raise, right? Raise, raise, fold, fold, download. Yeah, I think I should call a re-raise. Yeah, must definitely ace check. No, no. I should re-raise if I'm double suited and if I'm singles suited, I should just call. Six, seven. Oh, that's, that's an interesting one. I think the free bet is fine. Yeah, let's look how deep are we? Yeah, we are just trying to be. So the board is rainbow. Free the port. BB versus S. No, 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 it's not correct. Small land versus button. Yeah, whatever. This is close enough. The word has no straight, so it's unfair. Six, two, seven. Why is it starting with a, okay, six. There, that's the one. Should check. Let's compare again. Very. Here it is. Button was small blind, so let's take the same one. Fold call. Seven, six, two. Seven. Six, two. Download. Yeah, very close. Very close, makes sense. Also interesting with our preferred sizing is full pot. I mean, basically no half-potting at all. I think a half pot is. Did I? Yeah, fixo. So let's remove this. Let's again load the hand classes. So probably aces and stuff are just being bad called. Top two, top pair, gut shot, top four, backdoor nut flush draw, gut shot. Overpair, backdoor nut flush draw, gut shot, bad, overpair, gut shot. So always overpair, top pair, gut shot. Top pair, only nut flush draw, these ends, all port and get in. I mean, I guessed there's no folding anymore. One sweet pot. Which, which chance are checked? Middle pair, backdoor nut flush draw, open manager. What's the also mainly potting? These are more checks. Overpair, backdoor flush draw, open manager. Okay, this is the trap if checked. With pair, backdoor flush draw, okay, let's probably check folding. No pair, two backdoor flush draws, open manager. Bottom two checks is bottom two checking to check raise. Or to check call. Set to backdoor flush draw, gut shot. So fifty percent is just been done with very strong hands. It seems like set. There are any blue bottom pair, backdoor nut flush draw, open manager. Bottom pair, backdoor nut flush draw. Ah, okay, so some, it's balance, we have some weaker hands in the two. Yeah, I guess we should not use the fifty percent one at all. Yeah. We don't want lockers in the dark. You should get active like we say in. How is this guy called? Ivan Ontec, the guy who talks about crypto lords and has also the crypto academy where you can learn coding and stuff. Probably you got that from him, right? So yeah, let's see what our hand is supposed to do. Ten, ten. Nein, nein. Checking some, potting most, half-potting, not really. Can I? Ah, okay, my bad. Pulled it under exclude. This makes no sense. Should not exclude this. Go. Wrong field. To backdoor flush draws, potting, one backdoor flush draw, potting. So potting always makes sense. I think I half-potted, hoping that he will get in hands like a pair. And a gut shot, pair and open end nine star, which I crush. But yeah, I guess my hand is not very well suited to do that. Because he might do something stupid with an overpair, which he folded against pot. But which he now decides to get in and then I could be crushed very hard. So let's full pot size bet. What did I do here? I raised, he called and. Yeah, that's an interesting one. I guess I probably should not bet in the first place. But if I don't bet, I'll bet, let's, this is something sober. So what's answers, might have a lot. Cut off versus buttons, singles suited. Pair board, we didn't have any pair board yesterday. Don't have the one we are, we need, but I guess this one is fine. Let's remove this. We check the majority of the time. Let's look into some hand classes. Is this not faster? Feels a bit like that. Wait, what? We again found a spot. Where Jane Nandes and. This one have different sizes, right? There is a seven, seven, six, mine has a flush draw, so let's go. Half pot. Okay, it's also half pot. Always forward, this is one third pot. Raise. Call for fold. Why is this half pot and not one third? I was like one hundred percent, this is one third pot. The next one is also. Okay, whatever. Okay. What? These frequencies also differ. Five percent again. Six, almost. So what hands should we bet? Chips. And straight draw. What also most frequent bets? Top two nut flush blocker. Nut flush blocker, so nut blockers a lot are very important. Two pair gut shot. Full house. Yo, for house, betting full house is always. Nice. Trips, bets, overpair nut flush draw. Okay, let's, um, wait a minute. Three, three and five, nine. Flush draw blocker, gut shot. Seems like that's mainly a check. And we can consider betting if we got a flush draw blocker too. Not without one, which I did. Hmm. What is if we are faced with a raise? What is the raise size? Probably the same. Fold, fold, high flush draw, gut shot. Okay. Flush draw and gut shot, we can call. Also, if we have to fold, if we check, we going for what? Let's check. And facing a bet, we do what? Call and re-raise some. Return our hand to bluff sometimes with a flush draw blocker. And some additional equity, our hand also is not that bad to turn into a bluff. Because we have indirect blocker to seven, because we have two cards, the neighbor hold of the seven with the five and nine. So yeah, makes sense to sometimes bluff here. Your next one. Think this one, I did something really crazy. I think that's probably also not backed by the solver, but let's find out. Raise. Fold, fold. I think I four bet and I think that's probably not correct. Seven, six, nine, king. It's probably correct when I got an ace too. Oh, wow, it's okay to do so. It's actually correct. But yeah, I thought it is not. With an ace, it's the same, right? Yep. What about a queen instead of a king? Okay, with a queen, we call always. If we have a king or an ace. Then we want to put in some forwards. And yeah, I put in the format. This was also because he is pretty aggressive from the button. Way more aggressive when he showed he's re-raising sixteen percent. And yeah, I was just like, come on, man, can't give you all these pots all the time. Need to put some pressure on you and yeah, that's what I did. First question is if this is a defend pre-flop, but it should be right. Yeah, maybe close the action. This is not even that close. And it's not a free bet. Yeah, I think it's not a free bet. Because our flush rest so low and the four and the deuce, yeah, the side cards, we don't like these two side cards. Yeah, so it's a defend and can only three bet if we are double suited. Can even defend if our hand is rainbow. Okay, let's. Single raise pot, button was a big blind. Queen nine, three, and pair, queen nine, two. Okay, we don't have a three. Okay, let's take this one instead. Let's move this. So yeah, we should check almost always. Makes sense, I guess. And what is he supposed to do? About fifty, fifty. Using a big sizing, yeah, that's a very draw heavy board. And we want to utilize a bigger sizing. What is our hand supposed to do? This is a fold. This is also not correct. Let's make it three, four, because we don't have a pair in the actual hand. Yeah, the flush draws, we want to continue and. Flush draw blocker, we don't want to continue. We want to continue some. Want to continue holding the backdoor flush draw and we hold the backdoor flush draw, so we should continue. Not sure if I continue or not. Let's see. Most likely not. not sure if I continue or not let's see most likely not oh this I almost folded almost I mean this guy is playing every hand and he is not looking that aggressive but only twenty one hands yet but yeah we could be in huge trouble if up against the higher set yeah but we block the nines and yeah I mean we got a set so we need to call and see another card can have a lot of draws you can have nine six you can have nine three although nine three is very unlikely can go crazy with aces which is slow played and now for some reason raises so yeah I guess folding now is not an option folding most turns yeah I mean we need to continue on many turns too I feel like yeah there's also three ways so we cannot put it into a solver it's also a little import another another thing why we cannot use solver here so yeah fine I guess what is this I just wanted to know if that's an open pretty sure it is king ten ten three yeah only rainbow this is a fault this is not rainbow so it's an open I three bet and I got this board okay that's interesting let's see the handle BB solution we are bit deeper but can't account for that this is small blind versus button not really but yeah close to it by the way that's the hand so the board is ten six four not there ten six fours not in there ten six ten seven five this is a bit more dry but we have to take what we get we should check most of the time but pre for aggressor let's compare this again to the pillow trainer I want to see if there are more spots where the percentages differ a lot call seven five ten seven five download yes is it already loaded yes it is yeah the the pot size bets the pro I oh I guess probably the one from vision is way more accurate because we got a lot of these small twenty nine percent bullshit twenty three thirty three percent bullshit here probably the sims from jayn and is just not run long enough so that's my guess hmm yo ace oh queen queen ace five queen queen ace five is not flush blocker do we have the not flush blocker now we don't overper not flush draw no we don't have that either we got an overper the gold flush blocker no so I should check only bets are so loud for him is fifty percent is the same in jane nandes program no it is not he can bet full pot as well but seems like it's not too bad but we miss that option because this size is not utilized at all or almost at all so pretty so that seems accurate if you face a bet I guess we should fold right open not flash draw yeah open up the stress not folding makes sense I don't have another flash draw I don't have a not flush blocker we have no flush blocker but some should calls the back of flash draws should call I don't have one so I should fold natural or dead oh seems like a bet I bet so I think some of our hand type is betting so let's see I think I did something wrong now so yeah we are back to the pre for aggressor we bet half pot we bet half pot okay now he is taking my bets he called the card on the turn is six and diamonds I mean it's not it's actually a six and spades but we have to adjust to the other board otherwise this makes sense and yeah now what okay roll this back we paired the seven this makes more sense we also had to adjust to the slightly different board and now we should bet we should check with not flush blocker we don't have that we should check the overper I think I was betting again but seems like this is not correct in GTO land if we bet we should use fifty percent most of the times so let's see how we should react to a bet with the queens check fold unless we have the nut flush draw then we can call I feel like betting again makes sense they get a lot of opponents because we often appeal with flush draws we appeal with a ten we appeal with open enders and yeah all these stuff and yeah you get a lot of things to fold and if you check and give your opponent the chance to take free cards or bluff at it you will put yourself in a very tough and difficult spot but in server world this is clear check I'm surprised I mean I don't bet this always but I sometimes at least bet it and yeah sometimes I even go check call but yeah this seems to be wrong so I might make some adjustments to my game I've guessed this three bet is garbage but let's find out let's first figure this out for one hundred BB go 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 away so this that and what don't want the board what is going on here okay we should we were able to reset it so full fold fold raise download king queen eight eight this seems marginal even with hundred BB so probably also marginal at fifty BB and with marginal I mean bad but let's see I mean it's less bad at one hundred BB for sure so at one hundred BB the solver is yeah unsure what to do but according to the V numbers it's more close to call when to a raise let's now make this a fifty BB sim good to see whether it's not SPU when I suspected it to be king queen eight this is again yeah seems like it is three bet when shorter so yeah but it's completely sucked because I got forward and when I caught when I had an overpair and when I caught again and when he raises with a nut flush draw and I was like fucking hell what's going on yeah so I got completely destroyed in this end but I also ran into that absolute top office range but still very annoying king queen eight eight is this a fold I guess not it is okay so I shouldn't have called the re race yeah which I did and yeah I got punished for that yeah okay so it's a fold to the re race but it's not a fold to the re race for one hundred BB right can't imagine that this is the case I got a lot more money left and this should be a call at one hundred BB no it's not why not it's even more expensive to call okay so I learned something and this is what is it if I have a yeah a hand like this cannot continue against the forward I assume so far that we can continue most of the time when we are doubles suited yeah but some cases this is not true and this is one of so yeah I need to yeah where is another thing I for a far enough on but needs to be applied to my game and yeah that's how it went so yeah that's a flop we got an overper we got the backdoor flush draw and it's hard to still fold when this happens how much so nineteen so we have to put in nineteen to win seventy one plus nineteen multiplied to so we need seventeen percent do we have seventeen percent hard to say I think we might not have seventeen percent to be honest we might not have seventeen percent that's very hard to fold once we got here with an overper but we might not have seventeen percent let's see a diamond queen diamond eight club king club he has like what what is it might it be like let's just make it seven percent and see what happens if it's seven percent then we have enough if it's five percent when we have exactly enough so can see it yeah so it was exactly on point I mean the pre flop call was wrong but on the flop I probably should not fold this is probably check vault one hundred B three red pot cut off we don't have this right no we don't have it so small blind versus button is something diff is different it's a lot of lot different because the buttons range is a lot wider than the one from the cutoff so this sucks yeah okay let's use this one instead raise fold fold raise call nine six twos I think we don't have that oh man nine seven three instead I mean nine seven threes is this more dry yeah it's not that good of a match okay let's still take it yeah let's download and see what we should do okay what is our hand supposed to do hmm this is again here like such a bullshit I mean nine percent thirty three thirty four percent eighty five percent three percent okay what is our hand what is this you would hear this heart so we got a jack in heart this is club club and this one is like if no the backdoor things so it's spade we should bet according to this one okay and what do we do with raise let's first see what they preferred raise sizes okay he's only raising big and we get raised big we check check you're all in with the flush draw otherwise not yeah it was also already also close checking and betting has almost the same visa yeah it was close what is this one happened here this good question probably open why is the pot so big he re raised called flop is check check on the turny bets what is my question here maybe what I should do on the flop I mean on the turn it's seems to be a fold, but on the flop this way more close, so three bet pot. I think we again don't have this one, so what's closest to it is UTG versus button. Ten, four, three, rainbow. Ten, we don't have it. Let's take this one instead. So we should always check. And opponent should maybe use a pot size. Okay, so let's do that. And we should fold very often. Should we fold our hand? Ace, queen, five, three. Is our hand even played? Yeah, it is and it should be folded. But we got a pair and a gut shot. We got a fucking pair and a gut shot. And a backdoor flush draw too. Mid pair, backdoor nut flush draw, yeah, bets the backdoor nut flush draw and the gut shot, so we should call. Okay, I misread. I thought we should fold, but we should not fold. We should call. Calling sucks, to be honest. Calling really sucks. What, what do we do if we not hit? Can we see sort of a board overview or something? What is this? I have no clue. So when it's a nine, it's spades, then we probably fold now because that was the situation. Mid pair, nut. What, what is nut? Nut flush draw, okay. Mid pair, nut flush draw. So we check most of the time, report, summons. Okay, mid pair, low, low flush draw, gut shot. So we donk. Sometimes we have to mid pair flush blocker. We have flush blockers now. We just have a mid pair and the gut shot we checked and we folded, I guess. And also this is a clever strategy, actually. So if we pick up additional equity, we just play stop and go and we might get some good things to fold still. We basically don't get many folds anymore once the pot's the flop, but we could get some folds on scare card turns. Let's see another turn. Risk mix. Sense, I guess. What about, let's... Let's make this a seven or something. We call and the card is a seven, bringing no flush draw. Are we donking too or... What is happening? Mid pair, backdoor, flush draw, open, straight draw. No, we are not donking a lot. But we have some bluffs. But not that many. So we should bluff at some frequency. What about a six? Six is a... So it gives bad. Let's check. Bet, call. Now we put in a six, nots. So we check, report, with mid pair, nut, upmender, mid pair, low flush draw and open, straight draw and some mid pairs only and... Hard to say. Ah, so the flush blocker wants, makes sense to choose for this because if we block the flush, then it's less likely. Can send me... No, I will not send you any money. And stop asking such things. I mean... Me also playing cash game, no tournaments, cannot support this bullshit. So yeah, makes sense. Stop and go. Good old stop and go. Makes sense. Should I defend this? That's a good question in the first place. Very good question. I think the answer probably is I should defend. And I probably should fold the flop. Ace for seven. Ace for seven. Yeah, with the nut flush draw, I should defend and double suited for sure defend, even re-raising the double suited version. By the way, you are wasting your time. Did anyone ever send you money when you ask Justin Twitch chat? My guess would be no, but... Small blind was button. By the way, I lost 170 bucks today and yeah, my IV was eight hundred and seventy plus, so I'm poor myself, so... I'm not poor, but yeah. I also don't want to do anything for karma because I don't believe in karma. So 100 BB, single raise pot. Button versus big blind. Single suit flop. Unpaired, ace, check eight. Next check, nine. Ace check, nine. Fine. But this is not ace check, nine. Ace check, nine. I should check, which I did and... Guess he should, he bets. Maybe he bets big. And I should fold a lot and probably also ace for seven, seven. Without a flush draw. Yeah, flush draw hand wants to re-raise some, but my hand not. So played this correct. That's a tough one. I think it's... This is very, very, very tough. Raise, fold, fold, download. I say it's... I say I don't know. We got some experts in Twitch chat, but today we are silent, but we probably know. I don't. And looks like this is a fold, right? No. This is very close, but according to this it's a very close call. We did see the situation. It was this one. So we'll take close call. It's a bit open. My guess is it is... So back, back, download. Five, six, seven, ten. Yeah, stupid open. Five, six, seven, ten. It is, yeah, but only double suited. It's a bit open. Almost definitely is it's, it's this... Yeah, this... Open it should be, but should I defend it? Probably not. But not very sure. King, king, queen. For... Re-raise when double suited. Single suited. It's called. But only with the king high flush draw, right? Where, where the queen high flush draws. King high flush draw. Searching queen high flush draws. Queen high flush draws get folded. So king high flush draw, we want to defend. Queen high flush draw, we don't. Is this a re-raise in the first place? Probably not. Yeah, good luck in your, at your journey and yeah, I would first start with pre-flop because that's more, way more easy to figure out than post-flop. Yeah, this is often not that intuitive, the post-flop stuff. Well, it's a free bet. I think probably not. So can we look into this, the solver, probably not. Yeah, what wants you, got it figured out, you probably don't need to work on this, that much anymore. At least it feels for me that way. I mean, I am still making some mistakes pre-flop, but it feels like everyone does and it's hard to do it completely perfect. So question is... What the fuck is this? I mean, this probably wasn't a three bet. There is, oh definitely was not three bet. I mean, I wonder if I can three bet if double suited. I mean, it's sort of fine because my opponent is very loose and against him you can three bet, but it's not a GTO three bet. Let's see if I would be allowed to three bet. If my hand would have been double suited. Okay, back, back, back. So let's put in the king, king, eight, seven, I think it is. King, king, eight, seven. Yeah, it's ninety-five percent equity, yeah, okay, might be true, but especially in the, the spots that are close, where we would have needed to run this in longer, so... It's annoying that you sometimes cannot figure out the answer of the solver, but yeah, that's the way it is. Okay, I would have been allowed to three bet if double suited, but single suited not. Let's now look into this in vision because I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do on this flop. Potting can't be that bad, but let's see if that's correct. So it's a three bet pot. Now here it's annoying also. Yeah, so let's hope that it's good enough to three bet UTG versus... Although we could do this, let's do this. Button versus cut-off because this is like button versus cut-off because this guy has stats from MP like he's on the cut-off. So this makes sense. Three bet pot, 100 BB, the board is queen three, four. Queen three, four. By the way, you can get free coaching. Check out my YouTube, there's a video where I describe how to do it. I have to give it away soon. Yeah. As I promised, that this will not be that long, so yeah, apply for it. Yeah, find out how it works on my YouTube channel. So let's not overhand. And yeah, he is supposed to check a lot. Makes sense. He's not the aggressor and we will bet not that often. Is king, king, seven, eight betting? It is when it has a flush draw. With a flush draw blocker, we bet sometimes. And when do we, when do we bet, bet? So we want to block the backdoor flush draw and the current flush draw to bet. We down bet, bet the back, we down block the backdoor flush draw, but we blocked the current flush draw. I think we should only bet fifty percent. So what happens if we get raised? Let's see. I think we, I've folding. Yes, we fold. Okay. Makes sense. I think I was potting, planning to call it off. This probably is bad call. For hundred percent pot bet. Two, eight, nine. So this is three bet pot, 100 BB. Batten versus small blind is fine. We don't have versus big blind and the board was two, eight, nine, rainbow. So rainbow. This is that one. We got king, queen, nine. King, queen, nine is betting full pot and yeah, probably also sticking off. So played this correct. This is, feels like a tough one. Ace, king, ace, five. What's the board? Check nine, three. Fold, raise, fold, raise, fold, call. What was it again? Check nine, three. Check nine. We don't have anything even close to it. Check base two. I think nine. Think nine. It's the flush draw there's no flush draw so that was. Check eight use whatever. We are a lot less flush draws with check eight use so I don't like it that much but. Uh yeah. Not much we can do about these missing sims and let's see uh what the aces do. Ace ace. King five. Apply filters. Um the flush where's the flush draw um. So looks like we bet most of the time. So pot. Guess it's pot call. He's all in. Guess it's not ace ace king five. Yeah. This board is a bit different so yeah it's might still be. Bad call. Whatever. What happened here? I think I. Did something that I'm not supposed to do. Uh forward ace. Am I allowed to do this? Uh I guess the answer is no. Hmm I probably can do it when I when double suited but I don't think that it's okay to do this single suited. Yeah double suited I can do this uh single suited I should not. And yeah it's like one a bit less when one would be worse but yeah um given his tendency this might be okay because he's. Three betting from the button thirty percent and that's a lot more than GTO ones I think GTO is like. Button versus cutoff probably eight or nine percent so here is fourteen so we can be a bit loser too. Um yo let's what is the board uh queen seven three. Okay let's make this this and then call and then put a queen seven three in there. With a flush right think and. Now it's on us with ace king jack jack probably shipping in um. So with diamonds we're shipping in some in the other hands we check. To be checked to in order to check fold. He is moving in. Ace king jack jack. No. We are checking to check call very interesting I mean why not put it in in the first place um if we check call anyways. Can't make that big of a difference other than the fact that we give free cards to stuff that might have called us. So if he has a three or seven only probably calls a sharp but if we check to him he probably doesn't shove himself so. I think that's a little bit worse against. The general population you play against. So you play PLO fifty? Hmm yeah I think uh you don't want to lose yourself that much in detail you um just want to. Yeah what do you want you want to get a understand the greater picture um get general rules um what you want to do in certain sports and. Down zoom into much into detail and nobody is playing GTO and yeah it's impossible to do so unless you are cheating. Um just try to have a good general understanding of every spot. Um it also helps a lot if you play around with propaganda tools not sure if you have this when you get a good um understanding about equities. And uh this tool you can also adjust um the ranges of your opponents according to where tendencies I mean some fish. Um are way off GTO and again these guys um it doesn't make sense to argue with GTO ranges. Where you have to build your own sims so to speak and therefore propaganda tools is perfect. And it's also perfect for spots um where you have no sim from and where you. And it also helps you to understand um what hands do how good and you get equities. Yeah this is a great tool as well and I think it's also cheap it's like hundred bucks or something and you only have to pay it one time and it's not a subscription. This looks non-standard. So we have fifty B B. It's a single race port. It's button versus big blind it's a singles suited board it's a straight board six eight nine. Six eight nine. And we why is the pot so small? Why is the pot so fucking small? He limped. Might have limped two people might have limped or something or he limped. Or he what is what is the min raises I think with the min raises I can make the pot bigger and I probably would. So this was like limped and I raised and he called. Maybe small blind call two and then he folded against the re-raise or. Something sick whatever um. I think I cannot have this hand now so that's annoying. So we cannot uh use a solver to get this figured out. Hmm let's just get an general idea. Okay I mean this is hard against it to get an idea so he's relative. He's pure and loose so he has probably like fifty percent. Uh he didn't raise so he has like thirty percent to fifty percent. Um the board is six diamond nine clubs eight clubs. And I have ten hearts kings clubs six clubs king hearts. So against this perceived range we do very well um his bed size also is not screaming strength so let's give him like some reasonable hands. Um like a flush draw. And open enders open enders are six seven seven eight seven nine. Hmm. It's six nine. What is that it's wrong seven nine uh seven eight seven nine seven eight seven nine um. You will probably play straights like this ten seven. Um five seven all sets six six nine nine eight eight um. Uh ten jack. Uh ten jack queen. Seven seven. Ten ten. Okay. How do we do against this betting range? We are fifty nine percent favorite um. What about his calling range? Uh with clubs he will call. The ace of the ace high flush draw for sure he will call. Let's say the king high flush draw is also enough for him not sure but yeah might be um or else is he continuing six seven is not continuing seven eight so can tell you seven nine is also continuing. All straights continue. Six six nine nine eight eight continue ten jack continues only if having the flush draw two and okay we have some other flush draws that also we continue. Um six seven of clubs eight seven with clubs uh nine seven with clubs will continue. Uh ten queen with clubs will continue. Seven jack with clubs. Um ten jack queen will continue it's a huge rap seven seven will not continue ten ten will not continue. Uh six seven plus okay uh this looks reasonable what about? Okay eight nine ten will continue um. Eight nine ten so open ender top two um now let's go to top two uh seven eight nine is an open ender top two. Uh I don't think he is folding six seven eight or six seven nine. Hmm. How we done now yeah that's that looks like a reasonable continuing range okay. This looks quite good we have fifty percent against this continuing range or his specific continuing range. And yeah uh we still have some full equity so where we could take down the fifty we we would already in port right now so this seems to make a lot of sense with re-raise. Um we could also try to figure out if it if we could make more money if you just call but this would be very difficult. Um. Calculation and would take a lot of time and yeah I'm quite. Uh okay with the result already um this looks like very much plus we and our hand to be honest doesn't play that well. Uh once we see turns out of position so I would guess that this is optimal line. Moving on to the next stand. Oh that's a tough one um. Yeah. Um. Yeah that I don't like this but is at all the also cannot use a solver we cost none of these servers has a. Uh three ways boards so let's just he's a tight um squezer so let's give him. A tight range. His ace. Uh he's we hit an ace I guess he's also just betting if he had hit the flush draw he's just betting. And our hand is three three ace ten. Um spade spade diamond. Diamond I still folded and I still think that's so correct but let's see how we do um yeah looks like we. Although this range is not although yeah I guess that's that's close to uh what is actually happening um. Yeah we had just have thirty three percent um he's full potting he still got a lot of money behind um we also got one more player behind us. Which could also get in as well and if it's getting three way I think we will be crushed very badly so um. Although we hit a good flop already for our hand uh it's still not good enough and we should fold. Yeah it's a bit open. Uh I think I don't really need to to look at this because I'm pretty sure that is um let's also find out if it's open from another gun I would say yes so if it's an open from another gun it should be an open from MP two. Uh let's find out ace eight eight three I think it is. Ace eight eight three. Wow okay from another gun it's not an open um it's an open from MP. So I was a bit overconfident in this one. I hope I didn't mess up completely I was very sure but this is an open for a position. Yeah it is an open for MP but not from another gun uh as the hand is a bit to disconnect I guess uh so next stand. Wets. Oh that's a very 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 tough one uh very hard also to analyze. Because we are way deeper than we are normally be and yeah he re-raised from the big blind. And I for bet and yeah now that's our flop and. We got a tough decision to make. We got just the aces with an open ender but a straight is already possible and if he has a straight we are almost drawing that. I could come up with something that's a bit comparable but not really but yeah the best thing we can do in terms of solver let's. So we are in position so let's make this U T G versus button for one hundred BB. And the three bet port it's rainbow seven eight jack. Rainbow. Uh straight possible seven. Jack. Okay that's not. That good as the pot to stack ratio is three and a half instead of two but. Let's see. U T G should. Donk a lot that's already very interesting. I mean that's not. It's it's like. Yeah um let's remove this and let's load ten classes. Guess a lot of straights uh nine ten. We have more nine tens probably here is a lot of aces. And yeah we so what are we doing? Two vector flush draws open ender set. Two vector flush draws in a gut shot so. Yeah so. If we hit something decent we basically want to donk here what about straights? Bottom two are not good enough. Uh what about straight? Didn't saw straight yet guess the most easy way to find straight is search for it's okay straight. Almost always leading. Uh, straight without back of flush draw is not leading always. Another flush draw, okay, yeah, okay. Let's, I didn't expect this, such a huge lead frag frequency. Uh, I wonder, um, if this matches, uh, what the PLO trainer wants to do. I mean, we completely got distracted from our hand, but we learned something really important and this is, um, something where an edge can be gained. Um, many or most people don't have good leading ranges. And yeah, I also think that I am one of the people who has, have no, um, decent leading, leading ranges, so I have to pay attention to spots like this. What? Are you fucking kidding me? In Jane Nenders, uh, Sims, um. This is even sicker, you should lead more than that. You should lead even ten percent more. Sick. So, I guess we also lead a lot of bullshit. Yeah, like king ten six four, so it's a bad gut shot and weak blocker and vector flush draw something. So, but let's not get too distracted. Did he lead? I think he was, was he leading? No, he was not leading, but he had a hand, he probably should have led. If it's checked, uh, I guess we should check, so, oh, we are not checking that much. Uh, what do we do with our hand? Ace, ace. Six, nine. We, oh, the bet size is not half pot. Uh, is, I think for Jane Nenders it will be half, half pot, uh, let's look into this, if it's checked. Yeah, we would bet half pot, so. Um. Yeah, here is they make uh, in vision, we differentiate between in and out of position, I think, and yeah, in position on these straight and flush boards, we bet less. And also the the frequencies again way different for this one. Look at that. I mean, here is fifty one percent check and here is sixty four, I mean, there shouldn't be, will, that big of a difference between the, the Sims. Yeah, you also, you're also familiar with, um, what is it called? Poker trainer? And why do you think, um, the differences between the frequencies are that huge between the two solvers? Ah, okay, um, I think I know why, uh, the difference. Um, is, yeah, 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 okay, I have a perfect explanation for the difference because yeah, here you bet bigger, um. But in other sports where the bet size is exactly the same, you also have like ten or twelve percent difference. Um, can you do, um, can you look into specific pre-flop spots with, uh, vision two? I mean, they got pre-flop now, but I think you can just do a training and cannot type in a hand, right? Okay, you can do it, yeah, need to test that after this hand, but yeah. Uh, what about this hand? Uh, USD, so we... What version do we have? We have a backdoor flush draw too, so. Two vector flush draws, bet, backdoor natural bet, vector flush draw, open trade drop, dozen bet necessarily, only betting. Then blocking a backdoor flush draw two, do I block a backdoor flush draw? Backdoor natural flush draw, yes, I do. Though, this one is below blocking a backdoor natural flush draw two, right? Yeah, and he's not betting, yeah. Yeah. Okay, seems like my hand is closer to a check, although, yeah, the potto stack ratio is a lot bigger, so probably, uh, betgeld in is fine. Uh, what happens if we get raised? Uh, overpair, open end straight draw, pot, 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 so we get it in. So let's see, uh. So practice when custom, practice when custom. And then PPT ranges. Hence we have to go here. I mean, I don't see, I mean, I can go to pre-flop, but then I have these infinite options. And it seems that I cannot, um. Let's do this and do raise first in cutoff. When I click apply, when I get to a quiz or I think. Uh, or I click generate. I think this is just leading to a quiz. Ah, okay, I think, um, this is it now, right? So if I, no, I cannot use hand filters. Okay. Learn. Yeah, but I, I want to, uh, look into pre-flop, so there is no board yet, so. So I'm probably, uh, right about the thing that you cannot. Yeah, don't want to practice it, I want to look into specific situations, for example, let's say I have king, king three, four with a king high suit and the cut off open race, should I now three bet or call and yeah, can I type in my hand somehow and see what I have to do? I think there is no option, right? Although there's hands. So we can ace, nine, oh, Broadway, ace, five, we plus one Broadway, run downs to gels. Hmm. So. What is limp versus raise? Don't understand this at all, it's only for blind versus blind, because yeah, so. In my understanding, you never limp unless you are in a small blind. So yeah, but here it's annoying, I cannot put in a specific hand. Can just click. Uh. Your hand, oh, what happened? Don't understand, generate. Okay, we go to raise first in. Let's say UTG. Click generate. No hands found, check your filters or generate new board. Uh, what? Okay, I think now cannot put in a hand, but I can click new hand. What? New hand. Reload. Seems like this is not working. Or I'm too, too stupid to... Raise first in UTG. I think I'm not really doing something wrong, what is not hand, low ten classes? Seems like nothing is happening, for this also nothing is happening. Okay, let's, let's just take some more. And then click generate. Is this crushing or? So I think for pre-flop, this is basically unusable and bad. But for post-flop, this seems fine. If I click in new hand, nothing happens. So, okay, let's keep one more try for this one. Hmm, so do you use this already or? So practice, hundred BB. Let's just go for UTG, generate. Okay, uh, but we cannot use hand filters, can we? No, we can just exclude cards. So I would say port, that's wrong, crack answers forward. Okay, okay, we are UTG, I thought we were button. Uh, okay. Fold. PPT range, copy to clipboard, so here, you have to click fold and then uh. I think. Ah, okay, so actually that's working. But it's this is, um, compared to, um, PLO trainer, yeah. The, the user interface is not that great. And yeah, took some time to figure that out. But could we, um, okay, we see eighty two versus eighteen. Let's compare this, uh, from cloud. If we match. Hmm, back download. I think it's, it's, this probably matches. No, sixteen point eight versus eighteen. Hmm, let's compare what, let's compare button, where you have a lot of hands. So. Click port. And when uh, forty six percent. Uh, let's compare this to Jane Nenders program. So forty six versus I think it's, yeah, fifty two, but quite a big difference. I mean, vice pre-flop. Uh, also wonder, uh, how big the difference is for free bets, um, so what do we have to do, uh? Facing arrays, uh, button, where is it? Ugh. Hmm, facing arrays, BB versus button. Generate. And okay, this is our hand, we probably got to call, no, we should fold, uh. So we should re-raise ten percent, call for the four percent. Um, the raise is close, I think raise is probably the same. Hmm. There might be more calling. Yeah, but let's compare. By the way, thanks for your help, um. Forty one percent should be called here. And yeah, this is also ten. What do you mean? Um, I come, um. Yeah, the thing is, um, PLO trainer, um, also has, uh, sims from a cloud. And yeah, this is another program, um, this program from, um, the PLO mastermind, the site of Jane Nenders. And yeah, we have some, uh. I mean, that's, that's a lot of difference, if you should defend thirty four percent compared to forty one percent. And yeah, pre-flop, yeah, pre-flop also, we, we, we also sometimes differ a lot in post-flop spots. Yeah, sometimes when the exact same bet size is used, like ten percent difference, um, in frequencies. And yeah, this seems pretty odd to me. I mean, people cannot, um, are not being good at yeah, putting in the sims or they run the sims not long enough or some issues seems to be there. And yeah, would be nice to know, uh, which of the two has the better sims. Yeah, but, uh, how can we come up with different ranges? They solve for pre-flop, I guess we both do the same and why are the ranges so much different? It shouldn't be if, um, the solver is configured correct. And it looks like we just have pre-flop, uh, raise for pot, we both have this and you can only limp from a small blind, uh. Don't see why there should be like ten percent difference in some spots. Anyways, I have to leave unfortunately, um, the last part probably also was not that interesting for viewers. Yeah, would love to talk about this, about, yeah, with, I could talk to Jane Nenders, I have on Skype, but he's not usually not responding. And if he responds, it's usually like he doesn't even read this, uh, or he... Uh, or he reads it and he reads it just half. And when he puts in the effort to write just one sentence, when I wrote a long story with screenshot and everything. And he probably just looked into one screenshot. So yeah, it's it's hard to talk to this guy. And yeah, this became harder to, after I made a video about him. I mean, this wasn't even too bad, but yeah, I think he's pretty upset. Yeah, the video, um, where I talked about GG and how hard it is to win on the high stakes. Uh, not sure. Hey, I will, I will ask him. Um. Yeah, I guess probably, um, because we want to put a lot of sims into, um, their both programs, we probably, um, are quite in a hurry and run the sims for only a short amount of time. So that's probably the reason, um, why these differences appear, but, um. Yeah, but, um, PLO one hundred, it's way easier. I mean, PLO one hundred, they have reasonable rake. But if you play PLO five K or PLO two K, the rake is not reasonable at all. And it seems unbeatable, um, if you, um, remove the rake back. And even Jane Nenders is not winning. He's just winning if you include the rake back. And yeah, I said that in a video and he was so mad. And since then, it's very hard to communicate with him. And he's just saying that I should, uh, write something in Discord where I think it's probably not helping me or anyone. But yeah, maybe I do that. Hmm, Shula might also beat that. I mean, I don't know why he's not, um, doing any streams anymore. But he in my eyes is the best player from the PLO mastermind coaches. And yeah, I liked and enjoyed his streams a lot, but unfortunately it seems like he's retired or just not streaming anymore. Because you give away a lot of infos and yeah, maybe that was the reason. I don't know. But it would be nice to see him stream again soon. Yeah, but as I said, uh, unfortunately got to go. Um, yeah, if you didn't do already, check out my YouTube channel too. And yeah, if you want a free coaching, feel free to apply to that too. Um, yeah, you can do this in, uh, yeah, I got an announcement and two videos where you can apply for it. And where also explain how to do this. Yeah, so thanks for watching. Until next time, I wish you good luck at the tables.